Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020. The topic today is Rural Accessory Dwelling Units, or ADUs. And this is informational and it says we need a decision, we have a decision to make. This is one hour, and if you'd like to join in via conference call, the number is 360-252-9020. And your PIN number is 1234. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. We also have Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards in the boardroom, along with our County Manager Romero Chavez. And we have Josh Cummings, our CPED Director. And a host of other smarter than me people that will be presenting and answering questions. We also have, is Amy Davis in? Romero?
No, she's not.
Okay, so that's it. So let's go ahead and begin. I'm going to turn it over. I'll start with Romero.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. Today is going to be, in a way, a long day. After all the many public hearings you have heard, all the many public testimony you have received on the many different items. And this is the first. And staff will walk you through what you've heard in terms of, as an overall background of the comments you receive on this. And at the end of the hour, I do hope and expect the Board will provide direction as to the next steps. And if, in fact, the Board is willing to have a formal action on this, the earliest in the last of this year will be December 15.
Okay. So Josh, we go to you next.
Are you done, Romero?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Excellent setup from the County Manager. I just had a couple of things really quickly. This is the culmination of the direction that the Board of County Commissioners provided at the beginning of this year before the pandemic had had. And this series of briefings, work sessions that you'll receive today are in large part because of your clear direction. So I wanted to express our appreciation to the Board of County Commissioners for that very clear direction on the prioritization of the topics that you wanted our team to facilitate in dialogue. And secondly, I'd like to express my appreciation to Jennifer Davis and her team. Over the past year, she also built the team. You'll see Andrew Bond on the screen, who wasn't with us in 2019. And other members of the team have risen to the occasion. And I just really wanted to say thank you to them for their professionalism and communication in facilitating these hard conversations that have led to this culmination of getting a place for you, the Board of County Commissioners, to make your decisions. We go through these work sessions today, and our team, Jennifer and her team, will conclude the day. At 6:30 PM, they begin planning commission to discuss the Shoreline Master Program. So we'll have these work sessions today, but the work doesn't stop for our great community planning team. They'll be facilitating another dialogue this evening. So if you feel like joining on the planning commission, you can listen to that too on S and P. But I just wanted to say thank you on those two points. And I'm probably going to go off screen, but if you need me, I'm here.
All right, who's taking it next?
I'll take it next, so.
Jennifer, yay!
Thanks, Josh. I feel tired already now that he laid that out. And I know we were up late with the wrap hearing last night as well. So there's a lot coming at you at the end of the year. And that is because staff takes seriously the priorities that you've set. And so we've actually worked really hard to bring everything to you to have the possibility to take action by the end of the year. But that is always up to you. So today, this is a follow-up work session to your public hearing you had on November 10th on rural accessory dwelling units. It was fairly well attended, plenty of public comment. This is a topic of high interest in our community, and we've heard comments on both sides and all sides of these issues. And so what you're going to hear today from Andrew Bond is really walking through some options that staff has developed to sort of clarify pieces of the ordinance that the public had questions about, or had comments about, or had concerns about. We developed those options in close consultation with our legal team. So you'll see Travis Burns is on the line as well. Because with rural accessory dwelling units, as you'll recall from previous briefings, we are walking a line in the rural area needing to balance both wanting to provide diverse new sources of affordable housing and ability for folks to age in place and do all those wonderful things ADUs can do. But we need to keep a special eye on protecting rural character and keeping our rural densities low. Again, the options that we created that Andrew's going to walk through today really try to create that balance. So it may not be able to be all things to all people, because we're talking about the rural area and we're talking about additional housing. But I think it will probably meet the needs of most folks in the community who want some additional housing options. So also, the direction we're seeking today is really about how you want to move forward. If you want to make some decisions today about which options you're comfortable with putting in the ordinance, we can turn that around and bring that forward to action at your final time for action, as Romero noted, which is December 15. So it would be quite a quick turnaround, and we'd only be able to do that if we had some direction today and everyone felt comfortable with the ordinance. Otherwise, it could be pushed into the beginning of next year. So I just wanted to be clear about that before we get started. So unless there's any questions off the top, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to walk us through the options that we've built into the ordinance and talk a little bit about the public comment.
I have a question, but let me ask my seatmate first. Commissioner Mensah, any questions?
Not yet.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards?
No, sir. Looking forward to the presentation. Thank you.
My question, Jennifer, is you stated we're walking a fine line, you know, maintaining rural character and such. And this would be for the county and for, I mean, unincorporated, but also in the UGA.
This is just for rural counties. So we already permit accessory dwelling units in our urban growth areas. I will say there will be a future project to take another look at our urban growth area ADU regulations, because the cities, who we try to match with our regulations and UGAs, have done some changes to their own regulations. That's going to be done in the next year or two. So we're now focused only on the rural, outside of urban growth area portions of the county with this new ordinance.
Perfect. That was exactly my point, is how we're working with the individual cities to maintain the character as well when they incorporate. Okay, thank you. You're annexed. Andrew?
Morning. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Does everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Great. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Bond with Community Planning. This morning's work session is to resolve the remaining issues highlighted by public comment and the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Staff work with the legal team to create additional comments for the Board to consider. These options will rectify the concerns related to conversion timelines, maximum number of ADUs, and the density language clarification and simplification. Staff has received 39 public comments since the start of the Board's process, with 32 comments in support of the proposal and seven containing questions related to the proposal or concerns over water quality, well and sewer connections, existing land use and rural character. More or less, how I perceive this playing out is going topic by topic and discussing each set of options with each topic rather than putting it all at the end, if that was all right with everyone. The first topic is conversion ADUs. The intent is to allow internal spaces to be converted or existing legal accessory structures to be converted to ADUs without expanding the structure. Comments staff have received throughout the process highlight limits on what and when can be converted, more flexibility on what can be converted, and to allow new structures to be built and converted at later time. The Prosecuting Attorney's Office provided feedback to simplify the language, and in conjunction with public comment, highlighted concerns over the potential loophole that could allow someone to build an accessory structure and then subsequently apply to convert the structure to an ADU. This could result in a conflict with the Growth Management Hearing Board's determination on 1,000 Friends of Washington versus Snohomish County. To resolve these concerns, staff have created three options for the Board to consider. Option 1 reads, "Conversion ADUs means the conversion of existing structures within the footprint of the primary dwelling unit, or conversions within the footprint of the detached accessory structure." More or less, option 1 cleans up the language by swapping space for structure and referring to the space as footprint. Option 2 reads, "Conversion ADU means the conversion of existing structures within the footprint of the primary dwelling unit, or conversions within the or conversion within the footprint of the detached accessory structure in existence prior to December 31st." And so with this option, we begin to dive into responding to the possible conflict with 1,000 Friends of Washington versus Snohomish County. And more or less carries over the same changes that we see in option 1, but then adds a date that if the structure is in existence prior to December 31st, 2020, it would be permitted to convert to an ADU. But any structure in existence after January 1st, 2021 would need to apply as a new detached accessory structure and need to meet the minimum density that's required for the zoning district. And option 3 reads, "Conversion ADUs means the conversion of existing structures within the footprint of a primary dwelling unit, or conversion within the footprint of a detached accessory structure that has legally been permitted for at least five years." And so again, we will be bringing over option 1, but this is a little more flexible, where we would just establish a timeline that a structure has to exist for, and five years is the number we kind of landed on, that anyone in the future would be able to be able to convert an accessory structure. And so with those three options, I'm available for any questions that we may have on these to help kind of clear up this section of concern.
So let me start with Commissioner Edwards. Do you have any questions on this?
Yes, I do. I guess what I would like to refer to is the Olympian newspaper on November 29th, which was last Sunday, and on Monday's edition, November 20th, both of them talk about ADU and the ability to utilize the ADU ordinance without so many restrictions in place that it becomes too much of a burden for the homeowner to make the change. And I just asked, are you familiar with either of the articles that I'm referring to?
I am.
Which one of the options would you propose and would be the most lenient to allow the homeowner, the flexibility, say, to age in place? I'll just use that as an example. And still meet the mandates of the Growth Management Act? So you've given us a couple of options here. Which one would give the homeowner the best flexibility to create an ADU on their property?
Well, I can take that one, Commissioner. I believe if you're looking for maximum flexibility, option 1 is maximum flexibility. It's not locking down a point in time where you've had to have had an accessory structure in place. And again, this is just talking about conversions. You're still going to be able to build an attached ADU. If you have the right amount of acreage, you're still going to be able to cite a new detached ADU under this ordinance. So these options are responding to public concern that without a point in time defined in the ordinance by which you will have had to have an accessory structure in place, some members of the public were concerned that that would be inviting a proliferation of ADUs beyond what may be consistent with Growth Management Act and our own policies to preserve rural character. I think that's an area of deliberation for you, and I know Travis has some thoughts about that. But option 1 is the most flexible because it doesn't put in a date. So theoretically, under option 1, you could build a detached garage tomorrow, get it permitted, and then the next day apply to convert it to be an accessory dwelling unit. I think that was the scenario that caused people some concern. On the other hand, some people really like that because it gives them the maximum flexibility to build ADUs on their property or convert their garages or accessory structures. The other two options, I would say option 2 is the most restrictive because it's locking everything in place by the end of this year. And option 3 sort of meets in the middle, where it says basically it's going to phase this in. It's going to allow you to convert something that's been on the ground for at least five years. So people, it's been part of the rural scene, you've driven past it. It's been out there as a structure for several years, and now someone's going to convert it to an ADU. So the impact is lessened, and that is the idea of having these three options. But maximum flexibility would be option 1, I would say.
Okay, then I'm going to throw a scenario out there and just make sure that I've got this covered. So mom's a widow, and she's living on five acres, and she has a garage. I don't know, maybe the garage was built last week because she didn't want to be out in the snow getting in her car, whatever. She has a stroke. The family decides that, well, we want mom to stay on the property with us, but we'll have to move in the house. We want to make a conversion of that existing garage. Under that scenario, option 1 gives that family the best option to be able to meet their particular needs, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think any of the options would, option 1 or 2 at least would be able to meet that scenario if they already have the garage in place by the time this ordinance is built. But if you're talking about a future point in time, option 1 would be the scenario that would apply.
And option 3, they'd be crippled. They'd have to put her in a home for five years or something before they could make that conversion or something. Is that right?
They wouldn't be able to convert unless the garage had been there for at least five years.
So I'm looking for that leeway that allows families to make that very crucial decision without them knowing what they're up against today, because the scenario can change tomorrow. So I guess that's where I'm going, is towards option 1. Would you agree that that, under my timeline of trying to help a family do business, that gives them the best option?
I think under this scenario, you described option 1 does provide the most flexibility. It's the highest risk in terms of challenge under the Growth Management Act. And that's why we developed these other options, because it's a little, to be frank, although we have a court decision, a hearings board decision, talking about the need to make sure that your ADUs in rural areas comply with maintaining rural character and meeting density, we don't have a lot of direction from the Hearings Board around conversion of accessory structures. And I think the risk is there that if you don't have a timeline established, that you could potentially be challenged on that issue. But I didn't know if Travis wanted to say anything to that, or if you had a direct question for him, because he's been helpful in providing some guidance on this for staff.
Okay, just to continue that conversation, my feeling is that we need to get ahead of this stampede that's going to be coming from the urban core. This pandemic has let people know that they don't have to live in town. I believe that the state as a whole is going to be faced with this whole movement, if you will. And I think this is going to be something that's going to help, and I'm hoping that we get ahead of the curve on that. So I'm willing, myself, it's such a minor chance, I don't think it's a problem. But that's just my own opinion on it. So and does, one final thing. Does this match, does option 1 match with the recommendation from our planning commission?
Yes, option 1 does.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Commissioner Mensah, you're up, sir, if you have any questions or comments.
Okay, Jennifer kind of touched on my first question, which is, it seemed like option 1 doesn't do anything to address the the risks of the legal case that you described at the outset of this presentation. So that would be of concern to me, just out of the gate, correct me if I'm wrong about that. I think option 3, with the flexibility of having this allow conversions happen in the future, is reasonable. I am concerned about the, and then my other question was, Andrew, you mentioned, you mentioned something about, so I want to clarify that nothing about these changes is changing the density, let's call it density control, because that was a phrase used in some of the thing. The density control provisions that were in the previous proposal that we have been considering. You made reference to it in option 2 as if there's a change, but I'm not seeing that, and I would want to make sure that that's, if that's happening, I understand.
So there's no change to what ADU type needs to meet density. Conversions attached, they don't, they wouldn't require meeting the density of the zoning district, but the detached would. The only changes that we see in option 2 and option 3 are the dates or the period of time that the ADU has to be in existence for. So otherwise, everything is generally the exact same, except for a little slight wording changes, but otherwise it's.
Okay, so you made reference to that concept, but that's nothing that's changed. This change, because I understand, I understand the change about the date. And I just want to make sure that's the only thing I need to be thinking about, and there's no other moving parts. Okay, well, I guess I would like to hear from Travis. I guess in response to Commissioner Edwards' points, you know, I, he has brought up numerous times over the last, since the pandemic, this urban flight concept and how we should be capitalizing on it, and I completely disagree with that. Whether it's the climate mitigation plan, whether it's the Sustainable Thirsting Plan, whether it's the TRPC's traffic congestion study, whether it's the agricultural strategies to save farmland, whether it's our own comprehensive plan about rural character, we have policy after policy and goal and strategy after strategy that relies on increasing density, making sure that we don't sprawl and create infrastructure. It doesn't help the county's budget, because when we allow this kind of sprawl, not only do we change the character of our county, which is just an intrinsic value that we have, but from a financial perspective, now we've got more sheriffs, deputies responding to calls out in far-flung rural areas. We have more fire response to pay for. We need more roads and roundabouts and everything else. So it's not a strategy that we should be trying to promote or take. It's not going to help the county in any way. It's actually going to hurt us in a whole host of ways. So that is not a consideration from my perspective. And as far as affordable housing, you know, I want this policy because, number one, there's a, I want, there's a lot of community support for the, I want to support the needs of the rural folks who live and maybe need to have a, you know, a family member age in place and things like that. You know, affordable housing needs to be focused, you know, some families spend up to 28% of their of their family income on transportation. And throwing people out into far-flung areas where they need cars is not helping with that issue. Again, it's all about creating walkable neighborhoods and just good growth management and good urban design and sustainable design is a way to get, and then looking at policies. And all the cities are looking at their ADU policies, and we will make sure that our UGA policies are in line with that. I fully support that. So anyway, that's all to say that I am concerned about. So anyway, that's all background to explain my position as to why I am concerned about a loophole that would essentially undermine, you know, our density issues. This is a, this is a planning commission proposal that I've been super excited about because, you know, when you can get a letter from the master builders and Futurewise both supporting, you've really nailed it. And so I've been very excited about this. I think the planning commission hit the right note on trying to find, and there's a couple of compromises in here, you know, allowing the conversions outside the density limits is, some people didn't like that. But I, you know, I've argued that that's a reasonable compromise as to all the different considerations that were being balanced by the planning commission. I think they did a good job. So I guess option 3 looks the most reasonable, I guess, to keep flexibility. Because if you said option 2, you'd basically be saying you'd never be able to convert anything going forward in the future. And hopefully, this is a policy that works for our county for years to come. So I see 3 as okay, but 1 doesn't do anything to address the legal concerns, and it does, this, it has, it could have this effect of undermining the rural, you know, density limits that we're, that I'm very concerned about. So that's all I got on that. And I'd like to hear from Travis if there's a, if you've got an opinion about the legal aspect.
I was going to make sure we had Travis weigh in on that. Thank you.
Hey, Hutch, could I ask another question of Andrew?
No, hang on. Let me get the answer from Travis, because that's kind of a burning question right now for two of us.
Yeah, good morning. I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, a good conversation here. And I'll just, you know, try to provide some feedback here. I don't want to use this time necessarily to get into the ins and outs of the legal requirements under GMA, you know, under the cases that, the previous cases, Snohomish County and others. But, you know, I do want to impress upon you all that the options that staff are presenting to you are all kind of one-offs. The general impression here, actually, the intent from the planning commission and through what staff have provided is that you allow allowances for, you know, an ADU on the single-family home within that footprint. And then the secondary piece, which is sort of the more complex area, everybody agrees that, you know, as Commissioner Mensah put it, all the stakeholders have, you know, sort of an agreement that, yeah, we're going to make it possible and flexible for folks to take detached and allow that to be modified, because of course, if you don't, if you modify it and don't change the footprint, there's some gains there, and that's well within your purview. The question here on these three options is more of a one-off. It's just, it's more of a technical aspect in terms of, you know, if we put it in as under option 1, then essentially the commission, you know, we would be advancing a policy that would, you know, more or less allow someone to build a garage, and then, you know, a couple of months later, build the ADU. And, you know, the concern there is by allowing that process and the capability of somebody to be able to just build a structure out of the blue. by allowing that process and the capability of somebody to be able to just build a structure out of the blue and not being a true modification, that you may, you know, deflate the whole intent and concept here, which is, no, we're talking about conversions. So the idea between option two and option three is to try to ensure that it is a proper conversion in in order to promote what is the basic policy here, which is create flexibility for conversions. So in some ways, I, you know, I I would really emphasize that you you not get too worried about the broader policy and just think about the mechanics of this. And think about, okay, which option do you think is the most appropriate in order to advance, you know, the proposal that's going forward? And by the way, all three of these options creates greater flexibility in the rural county. I mean, they're all, you know, they're all very closely aligned. So, you know, I would just encourage you all to take a more of a mechanical look to see what your preference is. And then, of course, if you are interested in looking at the the legal liabilities, there is no black and white answer here, folks. I think you'll hear that. You know, every time you talk to me about GMA compliance, but if that continues to be a concern, you know, I would recommend that we we may set up an executive session, discuss the details, but, you know, I I'm not going to say that that's absolutely necessary, you know, largely a mechanical issue, in my opinion, and and just urge you all to, you know, to view it that way. And if we need to do additional conversation, you know, let us know.
Ty, did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's, well, I guess, um, yeah, I mean, was, am I correct, Travis, when I said that option one really is not doing anything to address? It's to the extent there is an issue based on that Snohomish County case. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. I I obviously haven't read this Snohomish County case, so I'm just going based on what I've heard this morning.
Yeah, I mean, just to be clear, um, right now, our our current, you know, other than the policies that say that, and the legislation out there that says that counties should promote ADUs, and there's general, you know, that that obviously is evolved over time. Our current code isn't compliance with with all the the GMA cases in terms of, you know, what, the question here is more, does this next move of flexibility maintain compliance? So I I know it's a technicality, but it it isn't necessarily addressed, you know, this this legislation isn't intended to address the GMA cases that have evolved over time. It's to address a broader policy to create flexibility and broader concern. The question, you know, the legal question here is whether this new flexibility that we're creating is in line with previous growth management cases. And, you know, there I should add, we're not looking at, like, you know, firm Supreme Court decisions here that I can line up and say, this is not, this is, you know, there's shades of gray here. On the other hand, I think it is an accurate statement that if you want, you know, to to ensure full compliance and that that option two or three lend themselves greater to fuller compliance with the evolving GMA cases. But you know, this is going to, this would be largely an option based sort of question. And and again, I I don't really want to go to more detail in this conversation. But if you want to get deeper into it, you know, I'd suggest we we set up an exec session.
Okay, you're done, Ty?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Okay, let me ask Travis this question then. The five years is just an arbitrary number brought from wherever. And so if that number was in in option three, if that number was changed to one year, does that again give that same protection that Commissioner Mensah is looking for?
That's where I was going.
I take that question back. You go ahead and ask it, Chair.
Oh, go ahead. You got it. Go ahead, Travis.
No, no, those are great questions. They're, you know, obviously, within these options, you have the purview to be able to to build in whatever you want. You know, staff will let you know, but I, you know, I think the five year mark came up because it does align itself with some other general time periods. I I think the notion is that, you know, it's enough time that folks would make their plans. It's assumed that, you know, perhaps people after five years, it it doesn't become part of a singular plan to convert or to create an entire detached unit, and that five years would be considered, you know, a realistic time period where their intent possibly plans may possibly change. But I don't have the answer for that. I can't, you know, that's more of a a policy call. But again, the intent here is to try to set an adequate time that represents, you know, a point of time when when someone's plans could reasonably change and not be, you know, again, a short enough time that they'd be gaming the the rule.
Okay, I I just have to then argue that point that I I do think it's arbitrary. I don't think there's any science behind it or any legal cases exactly behind it. I I'll use the thousand-foot setback in our mineral lands as an example. We're the only county in the state that's got anything like that. Our closest county, Pierce County, is 25 feet. So where where that comes from and how those get developed, I question that. But I I think that if we were going to compromise, I think, what's the difference between one, five, eight? We got a number in there, if that's what you're looking for. And that gives the old folks that do have a stroke time to get their medical things in order and make a conversion, I guess, if it happens. I'm I'm willing to compromise on things. I just want to make it the least restrictive, and I kind of want to follow what's going on here in the paper on the articles that they've been writing, that people are going to do this anyway. Why should we throw roadblocks in front of them so they can't do it legally? And they're going to go ahead and do it. I can tell you, I know if I was in that situation, I would do it. So I I have no problem with compromising to make it work, but I think we have to have some common sense. And just arbitrary numbers don't make sense to me. That's where I'm at.
All right, so I'm going to be all over the map. Number one, I'm looking at the the memo provided by Andrew. Thank you, Andrew, for that. That gives us the three options that we're chewing up. But the briefing document only gives us two options. One being is accept the proposal, and the other is request additional amendments. So I'm excluding the briefing document, looking at just these three options. Am I correct in that? Okay, and I also would like to have the most flexibility for the for the citizenry in the rural counties I can give. And this isn't just about conversion, but it's about building ADUs. Is that correct also?
Yeah.
Okay, and you asked my question already upfront, I think it was Gary about the planning commission. And this is about, in my head, about seniors sheltering in place, having a place to go should they be forced into this one way or the other. And you also addressed my issue of the at least five years in option three, if it could be six months or a year or eight years, if there's flexibility there. But if I look also at some of the public comment that was received, one individual, doesn't matter what his name is, but Paul Knox says that he would like to see ADUs limited in size and height, but also be set back from the street to preserve the rural feel. Is that put a part, is that piece in any of these options that we have where that where it's hidden from the from the street?
We did not include anything like that. We just require that the ADUs comply with the standards of that specific zoning district. So the setback standards, the height limitations and whatnot. There was a conversation during the planning commission regarding having additional standards that required it to either be behind the building or shared driveways or things like that. And they went for the least restrictive and made it so that they would comply with just the minimum standards that just the house would have to comply with. And the only really specific thing that we will see regarding ADUs is when they're attached, they need to match the overall trim and design and feel of the principal structure and not standalone.
That that makes sense. And when I'm looking at the these options, they all say conversion, which means it has to be an existing building rather than allowing someone to build an ADU. Explain that to me.
And so what we're seeing on this presentation is just the unresolved issues. So in the ordinance as it is today, you are able to build an attached ADU, you're allowed to convert an ADU in your basement, your attic, some part of your house. And what we're talking about today is just specific to detached, existing accessory structures. And what the rules are for those. And so
Yeah, I just wanted to remind you that the whole ordinance allows for three types: attached, conversions, which is what we're focused on today, because that's what we received comment, question, concern about, and new detached. But for the new detached, we have that density control, as Commissioner Mensah mentioned, where you have to have, if it's in a one to five zone, you'd have to have 10 acres to build a, basically, a second house, new detached structure. Conversion is that option that allows a little more flexibility to take something that's already on your property and turn it into an ADU. So I think that's why we're focused so much on that today. But it doesn't remove or change the other options that are built into the ordinance to do an attached or a new ADU.
All right, thank you, Andrew and Jennifer. That that brings it into focus for me. Thank you. So the 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 option issues or the the difference in the options is no time limit, where someone has to build it within the next 30 days, or at least five years it has to be in existence.
Or, as Commissioner Edwards pointed out, I mean, the five years, although that was, we came to that based on some discussion, there's flexibility there if you wanted to compromise on that length of time. I think the idea of a length of time is simply to build in that additional control on the pace of conversions of structures in the rural area. So we're maintaining that rural character and rural density.
Thank you. Now, now I've got it. All right, any other questions from my seatmates? Ty or Gary? Go ahead, Ty.
Just one kind of follow up, tying together what Jennifer was just saying and what Hutch, you're asking about, is that I just, I just want to make the point that the conversions we're focused on because a major point of compromise was allowing the conversions outside the damage, the density limit. So the the whole point is we don't want that to be exploited beyond what the intent was. And it's it's true that five years is arbitrary. I mean, it's it's no science behind it, but you're you're trying to come up with a amount of time that, you know, I kind of, I think Travis made the comment of like, okay, well, if someone's willing to build a garage and leave it as a garage for five years or more and then convert it, you know, that's probably not part of a of a strategy to game the system. That's probably a legitimate garage that they have. And then a need came up, and they dealt with. I think when you, you know, if you said it was a year, then somebody'd be like, okay, let's just build this, you know, we really want an attached ADU. We don't want to have to comply with the density control. We just wait a year. I mean, I I can easily see people using that as an end run, which is the whole point. And 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 it's not that we're trying to stop people from doing it, it's just, it's an, it's letting them have this exception to to the, to the, to the density control that applies almost by law in in the case of a detached, which they can still build, subject to those parameters. So I just wanted to clarify that point.
Gary?
Yes. I I want to bring back to keeping families together. I think keeping families together is the most important thing that we can do as policy setters. And I think older folks, when they would like to keep the family place, they'd like to have one of the kids live there or whatever it is, I think the the more flexibility we give them, the better. But I'm also, I I don't want to end up in litigation with over, over say, having absolutely no restriction on there. That's why I'm saying, okay, I don't care if an older person is living there, and they know that if they build a garage today, it's going to be a garage for a year, but they're thinking about their health. They're already older. They don't know when it's going to slip to the point that they need help or don't need help. And I don't want to put restrictions on those type of family issues that come into play. So that's why I want the least restriction. But I want the protection as well. So I'd be fine with the the one-year number in there.
On option three with a one year?
Yeah.
How do we feel about that?
Yeah, Ty, what do you think about that one year on option three?
I I don't think that that's meets the, meets the the point. I mean, three years, maybe, but I don't know, we may have to just disagree on that. I I don't, I I think five years makes sense to me. I don't think, I don't, definitely don't want it. Option two doesn't attract me, is is blocking it for from future conversion, a future structure. But I just think that you're you're going to have folks a year that are going to are going to use it as, it may, you know, it may not be very many. It may not, it may be, I definitely don't think it's enough to actually achieve the goal. It just may not be enough to really matter. So I guess that's one consideration. I'm thinking out loud, because I hadn't seen these before, but you know, anyway.
And you 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 say it might not be enough to achieve the goal, but might not be enough to to matter. I don't know what you mean to matter.
What I mean about to matter to really like create this flood of ADUs that that expand, you know, that that are outside the the density limits of our rural areas. You know, it may be, I mean, I think people are going to, are going to, a year, going to probably you know, build a garage with the intent of it being an ADU and not be forthright in their permit for the garage and et cetera, which is kind of what the concern was. But I don't know how many people that will be. It might not be very many.
Okay, because it will matter, of course, if people want to use that or need to use it. When I first looked at these, I I crossed out option three. I did not like it in any way, shape or form because of the five years. Option two, I thought was kind of meaningless, and I liked option one because of the greater flexibility, but the risk involved kind of caused me to pause. So option three, if we did it one year, I could easily live with that. That's that's where I am. But staff is looking for direction now, before we come back to this on the 15th or so.
Well, it's up to you. I mean, if we get direction from you today that it's option three with one year, we can build that into the ordinance and bring that back on December 15th, because I think that's, this issue is the only real critical decision point today. There are some other minor changes to the ordinance we wanted to go over, but they're just clarifications. So if we get to this issue being resolved, we can definitely bring it to the 15th.
So let me ask my seatmates then, is option, is option two dead in the water for all three of us? Or not?
It is for me.
Ty?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to go to option two. That's
Okay.
necessarily restricted.
So it comes to one or three, but three with with flexibility in that that time limit. Can we nix one?
No, I tell you what, if, Hutch, if you're, if you, I'm only going to the one year in option three, because I'm trying to build a compromise and and give the protection needed. I'm a gambler. I'd go with option one if it was up to me. That's where I'm at. But if we can't get option one, then I'd go option two, or I mean, option three with one year in it. So that's kind of where I'm at.
So maybe, maybe you need, you need to actually vote on the different options, Commissioner. Because what what I understand is, is the board is interested in implementing ADUs in the rural areas. And and I think that is probably what I'm hearing, not consensus by the board. So then the next step in the process is is based on on the information you receive on the public testimony. The option one brings a little bit of a higher risk from the legal point of view. Option two, as you already decided perhaps, is not, is not an option the board is entertaining. So then, before you get to this point, I will suggest for you to actually exercise your vote on the different options presented to you today. And if you ended up on an option three, then the next decision will be whether the five years stays or a variation within five years is something the board will like to implement.
Logistically, though, if 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 we want to adopt, we just say vote on three, it says five years, then we have to go back and revisit rather than change it now and vote it?
No, no, no. Today is, what I'm saying, the exercise in your vote to, vote to provide direction.
Okay.
You're not approving anything today formally.
All right, well, I, you're working thumbs up or down on for option three, thumbs up, as long as we can change the time period.
So let's leave it at that time. Perhaps if if I can hear the 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 board members on on Perhaps if, if I can hear the, the, the board members on, on, on your decision on option one.
I'm a thumbs up on option one.
So we have two thumbs down in option, option one and, and one up in option number two.
Down.
So then we have three zero in option, so the large whole conversation.
I got to throw in a caveat, remember, I got to throw in a caveat. I'm only giving thumbs down to option one if we're successful in changing the time period on option three.
So then now the, you can go back and, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to facilitate the, the decision-making process here.
Thank you. Okay.
You're not locking on anything at this point. It's just facilitating the, the conversation in a way. Now, the, the, the option number three they have before you and you already discussed the five years. And the five years is, is not necessarily a scientific number, but certainly has a little bit of, of value in terms of making sure that an individual who is going through this process has an established use before the conversion occurs. Whether it's a one-year, you know, I understand the, the example that Mr. Commissioner Edwards provided in, in terms of an older couple and see how to see the value of a conversion of a garage. But outside of that example, there may be several other individuals. They may probably build a garage with intent to convert it in a year, which is, and, and that becomes a little more problematic perhaps. So that's what, I, as I understand, that those are the, the, the bookends of option number three between five and maybe one.
Option three, you said two.
Option two, option three, yeah. Between the bookends of option three between five and one. And this, I'll just provide my perspective in terms of, you know, is, is, is making sure that if somebody's building a garage, that's the intended use at the time they build it. And then they do have the option, in this case, in five years to convert it. And, and the option number one, they build it and perhaps in a year they know they can probably convert it. So it, it, it is the underlying tone in my opinion. They perhaps give the option, somebody just to build a garage which requires less than the normal building a, a, an ADU, knowing that in, in a year they're going to convert it anyways. So.
Okay, I, I would like to just throw in one more argument. I disagree with the county manager. I think that when we start extending restrictions out farther and farther and farther, we're limiting the options that a family might have to take that action. So I think one year, I'm, if, if I can't get option one through this democratic process, which I favor is option one, then I am in favor of option three with one year in there instead of five.
All right, and that's where I am. If I can't get the one-year on three, then we'll go to one. But this, we have, if it's a two-to-one vote at this point.
That's fine.
But Ty, you want to weigh in?
Oh, I, I mean, I, I think I could probably live with three, but I think one doesn't really achieve the, the, the point. And so I'm, I'm thumbs down on that.
Okay. So remember, you got what you needed?
Uh, yeah, I believe I have a, 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 at least a direction in option number three with one year on that two-to-one.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. That's building the ordinance. Maybe we could quickly use the remaining minutes to run through the other more simple changes, just so you're aware of them.
So the two final changes are to the number of ADUs permitted on a parcel and density. Both sections are not substantive changes. They are just more verbiage clarifications and simplifications. And so the first one is relating to how many ADUs are permitted on a parcel. The only primary difference that we're going to see is we're changing accessory residential uses to structures so that there is the standardization that we see with the other definitions. That's for that one. And then the other one relates to density. And we did have quite a few comments from individuals questioning, when does density trigger? And so what we are looking to do with this proposal is more or less eliminate the existing code section that kind of is all-encompassing and then break it into three individual code sections that relate to attached conversions and detached and define them individually. The attached and converted will be the exact same because those do not trigger a density requirement. The detached, new, new detached will trigger a density requirement and that will be articulated, as you see on the screen, in three sections.
Yeah, and this is just basically checking a box of making sure you've had eyes on this. This is actually not changing anything about the proposed ordinance or its restrictions that were proposed related to density. But we did have folks that were unclear. And so we wanted to make sure, and Travis helped us kind of create a language that was very specific to each type of ADU. So it's very clear which you need double the parcel size for and which you do not.
Go ahead Ty.
I, I don't want, I don't mean to cut you off because I was wanting to ask, I'm, we're running out of time and I wanted, I had an unrelated topic I wanted to ask before we run out of time. Is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
So one of the, you know, prior to the AD, this ADU changes, we have the family member units and one of the public commenters, I, I, it sounded like he lived in an FMU and was angry that he wasn't going to be treated in the same way. And so I guess I didn't really understand his comment, like the details of it. So I, I just wanted to see if you could help me understand, do FMU still exist after this? And how do they, what are they not, what was he mad about? What, what is he not getting as an FMU that he would if he were treated as an ADU?
Okay, so FMUs, as you know, are permitted as temporary, right? They come in and they're allowed to exist on, let's say you have three acres and you have a house, you can put in a temporary FMU without triggering maybe compliance issues with density under growth management because they're seen as temporary uses. You file an affidavit, only family members live there. When you leave, the FMU has to go away. So that, none of that has changed. ADUs do not touch any of those requirements. FMUs are still going to be allowed in the county. I think what the commenter was saying is that they would like the ability to take their currently temporary FMU and convert it into a permanent ADU. And that does have some, brings up some concerns about density requirements because basically you're, again, it would be a loophole where you would have a temporary FMU permitted and then you would be able to convert it somehow to a permanent second residence on a lot that is, would not normally support two separate residences under the zoning code.
Oh, so he'd be trying to use the FMU basically like a conversion?
Yes, correct.
Get around density control. So it'd be almost a worse, a, a worse situation, worse, I'll just use that. It would be even an easier situation for, than actually getting a garage permitted, for example, with the intent of making it an ADU.
Potentially.
Call in this temporary FMU, you wouldn't even need that permit. And then you'd be, you could convert it without having to be subject, okay. I think I understand the concern and why that wasn't included. But there's still, he's still good to go. I just was worried that somehow he wasn't going to be able to, to live in the way he'd been living, you know, because of something we were doing here that, that wasn't necessary. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead Gary.
I want to clarify something. So if I have a FMU now, then I will not be able to convert it to an ADU under this ordinance?
No, it would not be considered under a conversion if.
Mike, why not? I guess, what, that's what I need to know.
They were just temporary.
Well, why not? Why can't we make that decision that somebody's been living in that ADU for, I don't know, five years or something? And it was allowed. Why can't we just go ahead and let a school teacher live in there? Grandma's died now. And why not let a school teacher live in there? That tearing it down is, that's typical bureaucracy stupidity as far as I'm concerned. I, I don't know why we couldn't just put in the ordinance that a family member unit that's already a living unit that we've approved of couldn't become an ADU under this ordinance.
Yeah, why not?
I, I think that the why not gets to a risk under violating your rural density and keeping rural densities low. You're taking a, a unit that was permitted under one set of understanding circumstances as a temporary use that is allowed to be there and is allowed to basically double your density on a substandard lot because it's temporary. And then you'd be allowing that to become permanent. I think that that's a, that's a risk. I'm not saying that's not a policy option because of course it would be. But I think it would be another level of risk in terms of your goals and policies and the intent of the Growth Management Act to maintain low rural densities.
Yeah, and I have, also I have to remind the board that that option was no part of the public process.
Yeah.
And that creates, that creates an issue because as you know, the planning commission went through this process, they got public testimony. And I don't think, but they, they, they were, it will be prudent for the board not to take this option. The network was part of the decision-making process or the public process where you choose us to bridge an FMU into a, a, an ADU. So I will, I will probably put some caution on the commission to take that, that, that particular option. If you like to, if the board like to explore the FMUs as to how they can probably eventually convert into an ADUs, keeping in mind that density is a key issue, then the board needs to put that in the scope of work, uh, uh, next year for this stuff to start working on it.
Yeah, so that's a different time and a different board.
Right.
Yep.
Didn't need to give Commissioner Edwards any new ideas. I'm sorry about that.
Here's what we've got. I don't disagree with what the county manager just laid out. We can look at this at a later date. But when government creates these type of stupid rules, I'll call them stupid because I don't have any problem with that, it's just like taking the freeway and cutting the speed limit down to 40. You know nobody's going to follow it. So all these citizens out there that have FMUs, I, out of all the ones I have observed, I did see one that was actually tore down. It was a, it was a nice structure and they took it down, but only because the planning department blackmailed them into not issuing them a expansion permit on their house by saying, oh, the compliance, if grandma wasn't living there, grandma died.
Commissioner?
Uh, I take offense of the blackmailing comment, please.
Well, I, I don't take any offense.
No, I take it.
Well, listen, no, timeout, timeout.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay.
I, I appreciate the comment, Ramal, thank you.
I think government is the problem, if that's.
The time is run on this. We're in overtime now. We need to end this meeting and get on to our comp plan update. We only have an hour for that now, it will be action packed.
Okay, so you will see this ordinance Commissioner on December 15th and that will include the option number three and that will include that one year.
So Josh, Jennifer, Andrew and Travis, thank you all very much. And we're going to adjourn this meeting and move on to the next one.
Great, thank you for the good discussion.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Different Zoom, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
What's that? Yeah, different Zoom.
Okay.